I'd like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Adams, who'd like to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Whipple to leave us in the invocation, followed by Councilman Hatch to leave us in the pledge. If you'd all like to join us, you may just stand.
Our dear heavenly father, we come before you this night to give you thanks for the opportunity that we have to meet as a city council, members of this community. We ask you to bless us to make good decisions, to keep an open mind on the things that we discuss. We ask you to bless the leaders of this country and help them to do the same. We ask you to please bless the employees of this city that they can feel the appreciation that we have for them. We ask and pray for and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Whipple, Councilman Hatch. Next item on the agenda is called the public. Any citizen desire to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city may do so. Council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city councils as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to Arizona Open Meeting Law. The city council cannot discuss or act on any items presented at this time. At the conclusion of call the public, individual city council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, ask the matter being put on a future agenda. I have one, Ms. Deb Austin. Come on, come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deborah Austin. I live at 340 South Fourteenth Drive, Cholo, Arizona. Thank you, Mayor Leach and the council, men and women. First of all, thank you for all the city does for our community. It's a lot of hard work to keep up with, especially with the explosion of our population. We're no longer a quaint, small town. Owens Street, across from Cholo City Park, has become a main thoroughway. Drivers do not heed the speed limit. I'm asking for consideration of installing temporary speed bumps. The arguments I have heard against speed bumps has been that during snow weather, speed bumps hinder the plowing. Torion has temporary speed bumps, but they put them down in about May and pulled them up in October, so the snow plows have no problem. The interior roads within the park have permanent speed humps. They are not as high as they used to be because the road has been resurfaced, but they are enough to slow people down. And the interior park road gets plowed sometimes. The corner coming around from Sixteenth Street with the fancy brickwork has been hit several times because of too much speed. And just recently, a huge section of park fence was wiped out because of someone speeding. This topic has been discussed before and turned down with a flat no. So my question to you is, why a flat no? Is it because of the expense? I Googled three companies, Granger Speed Bumps and Humps dot com and Traffic Safety Store. Amazon listed several other companies who sell temporary speed bumps. The price can range from a hundred bucks for cheap plastic ones to eight hundred bucks for hard rubber ones. Is the price of maybe four speed bumps too expensive, even though they might save a life? Owens needs temporary speed bumps during the summer, especially during Little League season, to be installed. I hope it doesn't take a child getting hit or killed before something is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Can we look into that? All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, where we'll consider for a motion, consideration of authorization to purchase a caterpillar, consideration of authorization to purchase a backup generator, an automatic transfer switch, consideration of approval of purchase of police department vehicles, consideration of acceptance of map dedication of Wolford Road, consideration of authorization to purchase playground equipment for Nicholas Homestead, consideration of approval agreement to the city of Cholo and Tucson, Mexico sister city, consideration of award of a construction contract to manhole replacement job order contract. Consideration of extension of timeframe for construction of improvements for conditional use permit, six zero two dash zero four dash two six one. Consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting on July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Entertained a motion to accept the consent calendar is read, or if somebody wants to pull one and discuss it.
To accept the consent calendar is presented.
Got a motion and need a vice, Vice Mayor Kokavas, need a second, got a second by Councilman Judd, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, under new business, consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty four dash twenty six, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Mrs. Hall, you're way over there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And just FYI, there is an amended staff summary right in front of you guys, so the numbers changed a little bit. So, resolution number R twenty twenty four dash twenty six outlines the unofficial results of the city of Cholo's primary election held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The ballot included the mayor's seat and three council seats. To win in the primary election, a candidate must receive a majority of the valid votes cast for the office of mayor or city council. Based on the complete unofficial results, the number of votes required to be declared elected is one thousand four hundred seventy one for the mayor and one thousand one hundred thirty five for city council. There were two candidates for the mayor's seat, Mike Alsop and John Leach Jr., and five candidates for the three council seats. Incumbents John Adams, Bryce Judd, Connie Kokavas, and newcomers Kenny Allen and Don Wilson Golden. Results show that mayoral candidate Mike Alsop received one thousand two hundred eighty nine votes and John Leach Jr. received one thousand six hundred fifty three votes. Since the votes for John Leach Jr. exceeded the required number of votes, he will be declared elected mayor. For the council seats, candidate Connie Kokavas received one thousand six hundred eighty six votes. John Adams received one thousand six hundred thirty one votes. Bryce Judd received one thousand four hundred sixty five votes. Don Wilson Golden received one thousand two hundred twenty five votes and Kenny Allen received seven hundred ninety nine votes. Connie Kokavas, John Adams, and Bryce Judd each received highest and more than the required votes needed and will be declared elected to the city council. Adopting resolution number R twenty twenty four dash twenty six will declare the election results to be the official canvas, with John Leach Jr. filling the mayor's seat, Connie Kokavas, John Adams, and Bryce Judd filling the three council seats respectively. The mayor and three council members will be sworn in at the December third, twenty twenty four council meeting. Thank you.
Should we not approve John since he's not here? I'll turn it back to the council for a motion.
He must be present to win.
He must be present to win. We should do that. Say sorry, John. Entertained a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty four twenty six, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Got a motion, I need a second by Councilman Hatch, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of applications submitted by Denise Wiseman Stowe on behalf of Cholo Main Street for special event liquor license for Battle of the Bands and food vans at Frontier Fields. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Denise Wiseman Stowe, representing Cholo Main Street, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the Battle of the Bands and food vans at Frontier Fields, scheduled for August thirty first. Cholo Main Street sponsors this event, which will start at twelve P M. and end by ten P M. The license will allow Cholo Main Street to sell beer and wine during the event. Event participants will enter and leave Frontier Fields through one entrance. An existing six-foot chain link fence surrounds the entire area. Alcohol will be sold in the blue area marked bar on the map provided with the application, and participants will be allowed to consume alcohol throughout the field. Additional security personnel will be stationed at the main Frontier Fields entrance exit and the beer and wine tickets, ticket sales location. In addition, they will patrol and monitor the fields to ensure that no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises and that there is no underage consumption. The Cholo Police Department and the Arizona Rangers will provide security. The Cholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application and action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. And unlike regular liquor licenses, the council's decision is final for such an application. And then Ms. Stowe is here if anybody has any questions.
Any questions or comments or motions?
Make motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Hatch.
I move to approve the application submitted by Denise Wiseman Stowe for special event liquor license for the Battle of the Bands and food vans on August the thirty first, twenty twenty four, at Frontier Fields.
You got a motion, got a second by Councilman Whipple, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of state housing trust funds grant for local jurisdiction affordable housing plans and award of contract for housing needs assessment and action plan. Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As you know, affordable housing continues to be a challenge in Cholo, as it is just about everywhere else. The city took a proactive approach in, by adopting incentives to encourage the development of workforce housing in February, and I'm happy to report that we're receiving a lot of interest in that as a result. So, staff feels an important next step is to understand the present and future needs of housing in this community and develop an action plan to address those needs. This will provide critical data for developers and may even lead to future grant opportunities to develop housing in Cholo. Staff applied for and was awarded a one hundred thousand dollar state housing trust funds grant to cover the cost of developing a housing needs assessment and action plan for Cholo. Staff issued an RFP and received three proposals. A selection committee comprised of staff and the P and C chair evaluated those proposals and determined that the proposal submitted by Matrix Design Group of Phoenix best meets the needs of the city. Staff recommends that the council accept the state housing trust funds grant's award and award a contract in the amount of sixty nine thousand five hundred dollars to Matrix Design Group to develop a housing needs assessment and action plan for Cholo. And I'm available for questions.
So, we have the hundred thousand dollar grant, but we only need sixty nine thousand, so they'll, the grants for sixty nine thousand, basically. And what I think is it?
It's four hundred thousand dollars, and if there are any overruns of any kind, we can, we still have funds available.
And what I do like about this is for future funds that we can receive because we're doing this. The idea of getting more grants because we're doing this, and I like the idea of getting the award, so, Vice Mayor.
So Steve, what is the process that they'll use to go about determining the?
They have a pretty comprehensive process, but they'll start by visiting the community and talking to stakeholders in the community and then evaluating the data that's available. And then from there, develop an action plan to meet whatever needs that are identified in the study. We don't really have an idea of what our inventory, housing inventory looks like or what our needs are for today or in the future. So, we're hoping that the study is going to address those needs.
Questions, comments?
Yes, Stephen, how long will it take for this assessment to occur? Like, what's the timeframe that we should expect this to?
We're looking at a seven-month process, so it'd be March of next year, we'll have it completed.
And this is city limits, right? It's not going to go a lot farther out. Any questions or comments or motions?
I move to accept the state housing trust funds grant award of one hundred thousand dollars for local jurisdiction affordable housing plans and award a contract to Matrix Design Group Incorporated to conduct a housing needs assessment and action plan for Cholo in an amount not to exceed sixty nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Got a motion, Councilman Clark, second.
I know that we've been getting a lot of grants lately, so I'm not sure who's responsible for receiving this grant, but make sure we send our extreme appreciation to them for getting this grant and making sure that we were awarded it, so.
Can you finish with a second? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I'm long-winded sometimes, Mayor.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Steve. Next item on the agenda is consideration of award of a pre-construction contract for Cholo Public Works building, design building, city of Cholo project number FM zero one two five. Mr. Kup.
Mayor and Council, excuse me. As a regular meeting on February sixth, twenty twenty four, the city council approved the purchase of a parcel located at fourteen eighty Lumbermans Loop for the purpose of constructing a building to house the public works operations staff. The building will accommodate up to seventy employees. The building will have offices, cubicles, kitchen, break room, restroom, showers, lockers, an assembly room, a computer lab, study room, a public foyer, and a file storage copier room and other spaces identified during the design process. It is anticipated that the building will be forty five hundred to fifty five hundred square feet. Project delivery method will be a design build, which is a qualifications-based selection process, and follow statutory requirements. Staff advertised a request for qualifications. Four statements of qualifications, SOQs, were received. A selection committee scored the SOQs and the LDNB LLC team was the highest ranked among submitting teams. The design build process will require two contracts, one for pre-construction, which is this one, and one for construction when pre-construction is completed. The pre-construction phase will include programming, schematic design, design development, and construction documents. Guaranteed maximum price for the construction contract will also be established in pre-construction. After the selection, staff met with LDNB LLC to finalize the project scope and negotiate the fee. A copy of the final scope and fees for the pre-construction services is included in the council packet and is attachment to the professional services contract. Staff recommends approving the pre-construction contract for Cholo Public Works Building Design Build, city of Cholo project FM zero one two five to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed eighty eight thousand five hundred thirty one dollars and eighty cents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir.
Question? What's the, so this is a design phase, what's the timeframe or what do you expect out of them?
I just met with the contractor today and he said two and a half to three months.
Just to design it. A couple of things I have is, is I hope that our staff is included. I know you're included, I know the city manager, I think Rick's all involved, but when we started building these fire departments, we made sure that the people that are going to be using this place, like our other staff, I don't want to, other workers are involved in designing something like this. I know that that drawing, that it was just a drawing, because to me, it looked like the kitchen area or lunchroom area looked like this big compared to the storage room. So I know that that's kind of a, just a conceptual plan. So hopefully, everybody gets to be involved to make sure there's enough room. The other part I had, that I had a concern is the fifty five hundred square feet. I don't want to underbuild something like this. They've been waiting for so many years to get something, and there's plenty of room out there. I just want to make sure it's big enough by the time it's built, we're at, grew it already. We did that with our police department years ago. Built it, pretty excited about it, by the time we stuffed everything in there, it was too small. So I just want to make sure that we build it big enough for the future, not for right now, because we know we're going to grow. Deb just said the same thing. We're not the little town we were before, and obviously, we're going to grow until we run out of dirt, so.
So, so that, the square footage actually was, originally was forty five hundred square feet, and that was based on some programming that staff did for seventy people. And it included like fifteen square feet per person for an assembly area and other kind of industry standard stuff. But the real process is going to be when we start meeting with the architects and they start going through things and telling us what we're going to have. The floor plan that was in the, that was in the packet, that was one that was in their proposal, and it was just kind of a conceptual sketch level type of thing.
And I think the biggest concern is the meeting rooms for, we were there one morning doing breakfast and they had to go do a class and they were stuffed in the meeting room. So, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're thinking of the future, and if we're going to spend money on building it, which we know it's well needed, but build it big enough for the future, not for seventy people today. Let's build it for twice that.
So we have forty six employees out there right now. And in the last ten years, I think we've added four staff to that group, so. It's been slow growing, but I think seventy gives us pretty good growth.
Just to clarify, we're actually kind of considering this an administrative building for public works, not necessarily the big trucks and?
No, it's going to be the place where all the operations guys, the streets, water, sewer, parks, all meet in the morning, do their morning, morning safety meeting, so they'll have room for that. We'll have room to do trainings and those types of things. So it's administrative, but it's for staff too, for the, for the field guys. That's why we're going to have lockers and showers and things like that, that really they don't have that they need.
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
There's no other comments or questions. I move to approve the pre-construction contract for Cholo Public Works Building Design Build, city of Cholo project number FM zero one two five to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed eighty eight thousand five hundred thirty one dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to the design for sure. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to actually turn this over to the Vice Mayor, I'm going to declare a conflict on this one. So, Vice Mayor, if you want to take it.
Okay, let's see who we have here to represent this, Bill and Anna.
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. In September twenty twenty three, the city of Cholo advertised a request for proposals for a ground lease and for hangar construction at the Cholo Regional Airport. There were three respondents with proposals. Staff reviewed the proposals, and based on the evaluation of the proposals, it was determined that Big Dog Development, LLC, had the best proposal. Big Dog Development is the developer of Phase One hangar development on the adjoining property at the Cholo Regional Airport. The proposed Phase Two hangar development largely mirrors Phase One. Pursuant to Big Dog Development's proposal and additional staff negotiations, Big Dog Development will be responsible for the survey, design, and infrastructure, which includes the installation of a taxi lane, water, and electric per the Phase Two design. Big Dog Development will bid the project and be responsible for all the costs associated with the project, except that the city will be responsible for the sewer. There will be ten hangars, each with having a total square footage of approximately ninety one hundred square feet. The hangars in Phase Two have been identified as K through T, or hangars fifty seven through sixty six on the attached maps. There are proposed ten non-commercial ground leases with the Big Dog Development for the proposed hangars K through T. Big Dog Development shall commence infrastructure construction within two and a half years of the ground leases being recorded. Big Dog Development's ground lease payments will begin upon the final acceptance of the infrastructure by city council. The ground lease rate will be at the current rate at the time the infrastructure is accepted. Staff recommends approving the development agreement. the time the infrastructure is accepted. Staff recommends approving the development agreement for the ground lease for the hangar construction and the 10 non-commercial ground leases for hangars K through T with Big Dog Development LLC at the Cholo Regional Airport, and authorize the Vice Mayor to sign all the documents on behalf of the city.
Is there any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion. Just a question. Anna, did you know that in law school, you'd have to say Big Dog Development? So many times I wanted to read it, and that at some future point, that as your clients, you'd have to read that.
No, I did not.
Development agreement for ground lease for hangar construction of the 10 non-commercial ground leases with Big Dog Development LLC at Cholo Regional Airport, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents on behalf of the city.
Can we amend that to Vice Mayor?
What's that?
Can we amend that to Vice Mayor to sign all the documents?
Sure. I will amend as per the recommendation of council.
Have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Any dissent? Non-motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Councilmember got a, I have one. I don't know if you guys remember, but last year, we had a sprint car driver that was killed out at the racetrack. He was from Hawaii, and they're having a memorial. This Friday is the inaugural Patrick Cop Memorial Race, and the 360 Ring Sprints will be here this weekend, and his family, there's 36 or 38 of them flying in this weekend from Hawaii to come to this race. So, if you guys can go, it's, gates open at 5:00 Friday and Saturday, and racing starts at 7:00. They would like everybody to wear their Hawaiian shirt, of course, to support this family. He's doing a big cook for him Friday night, so he's really whining and dining this weekend. It's nice. His wife's going to be here with his kids, so it's pretty sad that happened last year, but it's a pretty dangerous sports, and I don't know if you've seen those 360s go around this little track, but they're amazing. And Brad, the promoter, he runs two other tracks in Arizona, and the racing on this track is better than the other two because they're so big, so they get spread out. So, anyway, if you got a chance to go, I think that, I'm not real sure, general admission is 18, military and seniors 15, students 13 through 17 is tanning, 12 and unders for free. So, if you get a chance, let's show the support of this family and make sure there's no metal showing in all those seats out there this weekend. So, if you get a chance, it'd be awesome to be out there, support this family. Anyway, that's all I had. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few things to bring to your attention. As you know, we're developing a business incubator here in Cholo, and the City of Cholo is partnering with the Cholo Chamber of Commerce to present a mixer for the construction and food services industries next Thursday, August 15, at 5:30 at the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. It's located at 81 East Dusse Club in Cholo. People involved in having in or having an interest in those industries, or anyone else interested in hearing more about the proposed business incubator project, is invited to attend. Council is also welcome and encouraged to attend. Need more information, you can contact Steve North at 928-532-4124. Also, we have coming up our 16th Annual E-Waste and Waste Tire Collection Event. That's going to be on Saturday, August 24, from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Navajo County Penrod Facility. That's 251 North Penrod Road. You're invited to drop off TVs and monitors, kind of limited to one per household, computer equipment, cables, stereo equipment, phones, chargers, power tools, as well as old tires that are dismounted from the rims. This is a free event, and this is for residential, drop off only. Again, you can contact Steve North, 928-532-4124. We thank Steve for putting this together every year. I think it's always been a good event for the city to get rid of some of their e-waste. We have a few projects going on around town. I'm sure everybody's seen the citywide paving project. They've been shaping the base material, going to pave that early next week. We have the Cholo Lake Spillway Utilities Project. The crossing is complete. They're working on, on tieovers at Cholo Lake Road. You may have noticed the Cholo Little League Field has been demoed a little, and we're working on the layout for the field, for the infill and irrigation improvements. The sod was purchased, and the field should be laser leveled in the coming weeks. Then, the East Cooley roadway improvements is scheduled to begin on August 12. We thank everyone for their patience. I know it can be a pain for this, but hopefully, when you get the new road or things in place, everybody's satisfied and happy with that. Finally, Mayor and Council, just wanted to inform you that Sally Williams, who was a former employee of the city, provided many years as a former employee at the Cholo Library, passed away this last week. She'll be missed. We want to express our condolences to her husband, Bob Williams, who was a former city council member, and to their family and friends. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody need seconds? Next item on the agenda, schedule of meetings.
Just our next regular meeting on August 20.
And remind the retreat is when? I know it's a few months away, but-
Over 23rd, a Wednesday.
All right, there's no more business before this council, during this meeting. Thank you.